Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular city council meeting of Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. Let the record show all councilors are present except for Councilor Hoffman-Sakaman. Ads and deletes. Add department and committee reports, number 3B, number 3C, number 6A, number 6B, and number 6C. Delete department and committee reports, number 4A. Could I get approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we're gonna add the movie night Sound of Freedom to the consent agenda.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Hibbing City Council meeting of June 21st, 2023. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of the Hibbing City Council Workshop meeting of June 21st, 2023. Wishes of the council.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Hildebrand?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Move on to the consent agenda. Number one, approve accounts payable dated 6/28/2023 checks, number 174999 through 175000 in the amount of $57,000. 6/30/2023 checks, number 175001 through 175102 in the amount of $874,253.19. Approval of two, approval of city payroll for the pay period ending 6/16/2023 checks, number 168754 through 168764 in the amount of $578,817.97. Number three, accept and place on file the Hibbing Police Department May 2023 activities report. Four, authorize the promotion of Matthew Rice for the paid-on-call firefighter engineer with the Hibbing Fire Department effective July 6th, 2023. Number five, authorize promotion of Scott Fisher for the paid-on-call firefighter engineer in the Hibbing Fire Department effective July 6th, 2023. Six, authorize the hire of Brianna Hanson for the full-time firefighter EMT position with the Hibbing Fire Department pending successful completion of pre-employment conditions. Seven, acknowledge the resignation of temporary library aide Corbin Geroch effective July 5th, 2023. Eight, authorize the posting of a full-time automated truck driver in the Public Works Department. Nine, acknowledge the resignation of driver paramedic Derek Heron from the Hibbing Fire Department effective August 25th, 2023. Ten, set the next regular Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 19th, 2023 at 5:00 PM at City Hall in the Hibbing City Council chambers. Eleven, set the city Hibbing Council workshop for Wednesday, July 19th, 2023 following the Hibbing City Council meeting at City Hall in the Hibbing City Council chambers. And twelve, authorize the Hibbing City Council to go to movie night at Mann's Theater on Tuesday, July 11th to see the movie Sound of Freedom. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Just one item approved that, just a note, one item approved that the June 23rd, 2023 agenda, we set the joint airport authority meeting with the Chisholm-Hibbing Airport Authority for Monday, August 21st, 2023 at 6:00 PM in a conference room of the administrative office at the Range Regional Airport. We'll move on to department and committee reports. Chief Estey.
Mayor and council, good evening. Tonight I have you to accept a grant fund in the amount of $12,939 from the Department of Justice. These funds will be used for squad up fitting and it is through their technical assistance grant.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Estey had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, chief. We'll move on to Laura Korneman. Good evening, Laura.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I come before you this evening to offer a resolution, number 230702, applying for the Minnesota Historical Society grant in the amount of, there is a small correction here, it is $9,485 for replacing our non-functioning microfilm machine. This machine is the one we use to access all our local history at the library that we have on microfilm.
Very good. So you're asking for to approve the amount of $9,485?
Correct. That we're applying for, for the grant, yes.
Applying for. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. City attorney, Mr. Barlin.
Mayor, members of the council, at a previous committee of the whole meeting, I had brought forward a proposed draft ordinance for a moratorium on the sale of THC and hemp-derived THC in light of the new statute passed by the legislature, which would go into effect on August 1st of this year. The moratorium would be a concept under which we would prohibit such sales in Hibbing with the understanding that the city would be studying the situation to determine whether or not they wanted to implement any kind of licensing and registration with regard to this kind of activity, much like you do for alcohol licenses and so forth. So it's on for your consideration this evening because we brought it at a previous meeting. It wouldn't have to be approved tonight if there were other questions or concerns. It really should go into, if you're going to do it, it should go into effect at your next meeting so that it goes into effect before the law takes effect on August 1st. But I brought it forward tonight or asked it to be brought forward since we had discussed it previously at the workshop. And I think Councilor Schweberger and I think Councilor Hoffman-Sakaman were not present at that meeting, so I don't know if they've had a chance to weigh in on it much at this point. That's why it's on for tonight, Judge.
Very good, Mr. Barlin. Hearing what Mr. Barlin had to say. Wishes of the council, whether or not we'd want to move forward with making decision or postpone to the next meeting. Wishes of the council.
And make a motion to table it.
We have a motion to table it. Our Councilor Bayless, your support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion at this point? Does anybody have any other questions? We're tabling it.
Typically, there's not a discussion on.
Okay, on the table, alright.
Yeah, you just take it one way or the other, vote it up or down.
Very good. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this will now be on our next council meeting also.
Right, it should be on the next council meeting.
Yes, per your recommendation.
And per on a motion to table, if the council didn't take it up at the next meeting, then they weren't gonna take it up at all, so to speak, so it would pass through.
Very good. We'll move on to number B.
Mayor and members of the council, as an ad tonight, Mr. Green had brought to my attention that there was a property at 2324 Sixth Avenue East that he had deemed has dilapidated and hazardous. And for your consideration this evening is a resolution directing the clerk to issue an order directing that that property be cleaned up and addressed. So that's on for your consideration this evening.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Barlin had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil. Second?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, Mr. Barlin.
Mayor and members of the council, at previous committee of the whole meetings, we had discussed reducing the size of our planning commission from seven members to five. We were struggling to field enough members to have meetings with respect to that group. So previously, it's already been published as a proposed, or excuse me, posted as a proposed ordinance change. It's on for your consideration this evening. The only change is to change the membership number from seven numbers to five members.
Very good. This was something we had discussed. So wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweberger. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Barlin.
Thanks, sir.
Move on to city clerk deputy administrator Candy Sepala.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The Chisholm-Hibbing Airport Authority is requesting that both councils, Hibbing and Chisholm, approve a resolution to support the purchase of real property per the state statute. So attached, you'll find the resolution approving the purchase of real property from Mark Waldo Vosberg by the Chisholm-Hibbing Airport Authority. So we just need to give our blessing. This would be for the airway property.
Oh, okay, across the street. Very good. Alright, hearing what Ms. Sepala's had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Candy.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. Item number one from my office this evening, I'm asking the city council to authorize me to sign an agreement between the city of Hibbing and St. Louis County for city office space. Our county assessing department is located here at City Hall. That agreement that we have with them has timed out. This renews that lease for a five-year term with a five-year option to renew it after that. I had laid out the terms and conditions in the in the agreement, but also rent, and they will be sharing in utilities and custodial and operation expenses. So if you have questions, I can try to answer those questions for you.
Very good. So what we're asking for is a new signed agreement with St. Louis County for city office space. Wishes the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? And this is five years, Mr. Przyzinski is what you said?
It's five years, and then there'll be an option at the end of that five to renew it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Also, in reference to St. Louis County and their location here at City Hall, their assessor's office I'm referring to, we do have an agreement with them to provide clerical services. That agreement also has expired on the 30th of June, I believe it was. So we are proposing to the city council that we renew that agreement. The major change to that will be, it'll be a pass-through, so the Sherburne County, or the St. Louis County Board would be financially responsible to pay the city of Hibbing back for those services. That's a little bit new. That tradition has been reversed in the past. It's something that we have workshopped, talked about it for about the last 10 months or so. So if you have any questions, I can try to address those and answer those questions. Otherwise, a motion to approve.
We're looking for a motion approved. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Ministers, report, Greg.
Mr. Mayor, city councilors, I want to report on two things. First thing is, it's budget season. We'll be setting up workshops for the city council to start talking about budgeting for 2024. And the second thing I want to report to the city council on is the fountain here at City Hall. It's an ongoing conversation. We were trying to let our facility assessment kind of deal with condition of that, steps forward. However, recently, we decided we probably should get a little bit more specific when it comes to the condition of that fountain. We know that the facade is starting to crumble. We know that the liners leaking substantially. We know that the pit has water, retains water. Some of the pumping systems aren't in very good condition, so some information for us, city council, obviously, but also for our residents, that we are taking a look at it. Probably the biggest challenge we've had is just getting people to call us back, contractors, to take a look at it and do the assessment. So with that, I would stand for any questions that you might have about the fountain. Otherwise, that's all I have for this evening.
Very good. Any questions, counselor? Very good. Hearing none. We'll move on to city services. Mr. Roth.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Tonight I have two facility use agreements for you guys, looking for authorization for a three-year period for each of them. The first one is between the city and the Iron Range Football League. This would be for the use of big power fields this fall for the next three years, and they have their flag football and youth tackle football out there, pretty much August through October. So we didn't have one in place before, but they will continue to operate as they have in the past. We'll just have a few requirements of them insurance-wise and just to cover both us and them going forward. So looking for authorization on that.
Hearing what Mr. Roth had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. B.
Yep, the second user agreement would be with the Iron Range RC Club. This is out at Wells Woodland Park down on Townline Road. And again, another three-year term for that group and just an updated agreement with them. So looking for your approval.
Very good. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. C.
C is adopting Resolution 23-0705, and this would authorize the city to make application to the IRRB toward the Kerry Lake campground project. This grant that we do have, or we did have, was through HEDA for the original 250,000 that HEDA applied for for the campground, has expired as of the end of June. We renewed that, that grant multiple times over the years. I think it was awarded a couple of years ago at least, and we have renewed it since then. But our scope of work has kind of changed since the original grant application. And they asked us if we would be willing to allow that one to lapse, and then we reapplied with a new scope of work and a new amount to ask for and move it forward in my department as well and keep it out of the HEDA department. So looking for approval to reapplied to that grant program again for the Kerry Lake campground.
Hearing what Mr. Roth said about reapplying for IRRR grant. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Move on to bids and quotes. City engineer Jesse Story.
Mayor and council, since 2013, we have been rehabilitating our sanitary sewers every year. With this project this year, we're over 107,000 feet that we've rehabilitated. We did open bids for this year's lining project. We had one bidder. Viton Company was the bidder with a bid amount of $724,417.50. The engineer's estimate on the project was a little over $714,000, so it was a pretty good bid. The funding breakdown is $450,000 is budgeted through the city. We received a CDBG grant in the amount of $123,125, and we will apply for IRRR funds for the remaining $141,000. This is a very important project. We do this to reduce INI, reduce sewer failures, and to try to extend the life of our treatment plant. So I'm asking council to approve the bid to Viton Company.
Okay, we're looking for approval for Vit to do our lining. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Jesse, how many feet will we do this year?
A little over 13,000.
Oh, so about two miles then roughly.
Mm-hmm.
A little over, but, and this fight has been, you've been very pleased with them the last, they've had the last two contracts, I think.
Yes, Mayor, since 2013, I think they've done this project six or seven times for us.
Very good. So we got an experienced contractor. Hearing, hearing no other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. B.
I'm Mayor and Council. We received a quote from SBS Incorporated for wash sand for, to mix with our salt for the winter. So we're trying, and that should say the 2324 winter. We're trying to plan for next year for, and we mix this with our salt for the roads. We did have about $49,000 budgeted in our Public Works 210 operating budget, and the price for this is $39,600. I'm asking for council.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say. Wish of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. C, Jesse.
Mayor and council, attached is a proposal from Baron Intertek for testing services for the Rainy Road Bridge Project. If you recall, this was awarded to Northern Constructors out of Duluth. They'll be starting the project in September. As part of the MINDOT requirements, we're required to test the compaction, concrete, and rebar on the project. This proposal's in the amount of $3,150, and we can use MSA funds to cover this cost. So I'm asking for council approval.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweberger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Mayor and council, attached is a proposal from LHB for construction management services for the Rainy Road Bridge Project. We did receive $756,300 in local bridge replacement funds. As part of that, we have to meet the MINDOT requirements for inspection and construction management. So I'm asking for council to approve the proposal from LHB in the amount of $59,885, and we can use MSA funds to cover a portion of this cost.
Perfect. Looking for construction management costs. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Jesse, is there a timeframe? You said they're starting in September?
Yeah, they figure there'll be about six weeks of construction.
Okay.
And they'll be done.
So they'll be by October, mid-October, they should be done.
Yeah, road should be open by the mid to end of October.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. E.
Mayor and council, truck number 66062, dump truck, needed exhaust repaired on it. Attached is a quote from Midstate Truck Service for the parts. We will do the install in-house with our mechanics. The cost for the parts are $3,279.14. This will come out of our operating budget for Public Works, so I'm asking for council approval.
Wish of the council for exhaust repair parts?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. F.
Mayor and council, attached is an estimate for three vituminous patches from SBS Incorporated. I did meet with Mr. Przyzinski and the mayor. We went and looked at two of these areas, one on 27th Street, and then one off 42nd Street across from the Hampton Inn. And then the other one I added to this is the patch that's across 12th by the Washington. That was a repair, a steam repair that was done by a contractor six, seven years ago, and that's pretty rough. So I'd like to, I'd like to get these patches done. They'll come in, they'll mail the vituminous out, they'll put in a good layer of vituminous on there to hold us over to when we can pave those. The cost for the work is $11,389, and I'm asking for council approval.
Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
I'll support, but I do have a question.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr.
Thank you, Mayor. Jesse, I'm curious. We have these issues with ore restoral work. Is there any way we can start getting the contractors to do a better job on this or hold them accountable for it? Because there's streets and alleys torn up, and it all falls on us.
Right, counselor, there, with this specific one by the Washington, that was a repair. That contractor has since gone bankrupt, have gone out of business. So we are going to take that on and repair that ourselves. The other two are just the streets are falling apart. But we do have a lot of repairs, and that's working more closely with the public utilities and with their contractor for that work. So we are working, we're starting to work with PUC a lot more than we did before, so we can get the compaction and we can get the restorals done properly.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jesse. I'm assuming you'll be speaking for Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Very good. Waste treatment.
Mayor and council, Mr. Hurd down at the tree implant needs some pump repair parts. He has quotes here included in the packet. Low quote was from Liberty Processing in the amount of $4,712. We will do the work down at the plant. Our workers will do that. So I'm asking for council approval.
Council, I'm looking for wish of the council for purchase pump repair parts.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Nick Arora, city services.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. Before you, I have a professional service agreement for commercial aquatic engineering. They, I was able to track down the original, one of the original installers of the fountain back 30 years ago, and he is still in business down in the metro area. He's willing to come up here, take a look at it, and put some budget numbers together for us, what it would take for repair, replacement parts, or what have you. He's willing to scope some of the pipes and do all that stuff. So hopefully, we can, you know, figure out a pathway forward, at least what the amount is, it's gonna be to repair it. So I don't have the official scope of services from you. This email came in late Friday, so I wanted to make sure to get it on the agenda. But I am working with him to get an official scope of business with him, but it would not exceed $3,000 is what we're looking at. So looking for council approval up to $3,000.
Okay. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
By Councilor Hildebrand. Alright, any discussion? Nick, it is great that you finally found someone that worked on that fountain, because that's been a tough one for quite a few years now.
Yeah, they've changed hands a few different times under new management, so it was tough to find, well, lucky to find, I guess, the actual installer. So he knows it inside and out, so he remembers it clearly. He's got pictures and blueprints and stuff too, so.
That is awesome. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Chief, Steve Estey.
I'm Mayor and council. Good evening. In front of you tonight is a quote from Enforcement Lighting to Upfit Squads. It's in the amount of $16,214. Of that amount, $12,939 will be paid by the Department of Justice grant we approved earlier. Looking for council approval to move forward with that.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Estey, Chief Estey had to say. Wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Steve, is that just for one squad car?
Two.
Two?
Yeah. Lot of recycled parts though from that, to make it work.
Sure. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. License and permits. Approve the 2023 transient merchant license of Melissa Sunville while catering to sell food in Hibbing. Wishes of the council. catering to sell food in Hibbing, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Approve the temporary liquor license of Palmer's Tavern to dispense alcohol to Wilson Adams' wedding at the Hibbing Memorial Building on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Number three, approve the special event permit application of City Hibbing to hold the Hibbing Street Dance on Saturday, July eighth, twenty-twenty-three in downtown Hibbing from five to eleven, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Or approve the special event permit application of the Mines and Pines Revisited Committee to Hold the Mines and Pine Revisited in Bennett Park on Friday and Saturday, August eighteenth, nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney, any discussion?
I will abstain on that vote.
Okay, we have one abstain, Councilor Schweberger. All, uh, wishes of the council, all, all, uh, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Approve the special event permit application Maria Wilson and Christine, Christian Adams to hold their wedding at the Hibbing Memorial Building on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless, support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Six, approve the temporary liquor license of Boomtown Brewery and Woodfire Grill to dispense alcohol in front of the Andra at the Hibbing Street Dance on Saturday, July eighth, twenty-twenty-three, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Could I have a motion for adjournment?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Alright, I, I apologize, Andy, I'm just curious, I had tabled earlier the motion on the cannabis discussion, um, and it was mainly because I, I just had a, a thought in the, in the wording of it, if I'm not mistaken, the state, um, if it's okay to have this conversation now, Mayor, I don't know if you're okay with that, but.
Yeah.
I believe the state said that we weren't, nobody's gonna be able to sell these products anyways, for like, up until at least a year, so I'm curious if it even makes sense for us to be voting on it, that was my intention for tabling it, I, I don't even think we should be voting on it, to be honest, cause I don't think it's an issue that we should take up at this time, so I'm curious what your advice would be as an approach on that.
Well, Councilor Bayless, I, I think those major dispensaries are talking about up to a year before those, um, that's what I've heard too generally, but, uh, I think that's based on an estimation, uh, from the state as to when they might get all their regulations in place.
Mm-hmm.
The, the concern I guess I would have, if we didn't put a moratorium on, if anything came any faster, and also, uh, then you, you weren't curtailing it, the, uh, whole gummy,